It is now nine, nine, one. I want to welcome everyone, those of you here and those of you online. Today is Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Welcome to the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. This meeting is come to work. So Commissioner Tony Haas, would you please, you know, rise? Would you please give us a quick invitation?
Lord, thank you for our many blessings and another chance to enjoy another day. Thank you for taking care of us and our families and meeting all our needs. We pray for blessings and healing to keep coming today, keep us safe and healthy always in Jesus' name.
May, at this point, we're going to ask our little board every hour, Mr. Gary Apple, to please leave us on the page of religions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with all due justice and
Thank you.
Commissioner, may I take a minute? I'm not seeing where I can get this recorded. If you could do the event.
Do we have a regular recorder as well?
I have it right here. I'll be recording that. Yes, there is. No, I don't see any. I'm on. I should have offered here and now I. Maybe it's. Usually that the little icon right up the top that says record. Can you just go in the room?
Pardon me, technical difficulties for a second. Once again, welcome to all of you. Mr. Earl Camp, would you please do your role call?
Commissioner Reese Sossis, here.
Commissioner Haas, here.
Commissioner Felix Sossis, here.
Approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
One change, Commissioner, has to work to move item sixteen A, consideration of OEM identification.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any discussion? Otherwise, I'll continue motion.
Move for approval of the agenda with adjutant issue.
Second motion.
Commissioner Reese Sossis, yes. Commissioner Haas, yes. Commissioner Felix Sossis, yes.
Section two, consideration admitted. We don't have any. So now let's go to our commissioners reading of correspondents committee reports. Commissioner Reese Sossis, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Chairman. The fourth of this month, we all attended our legislative meeting. I was able to give county update. I'd like to thank our staff for the wonderful job that they did in getting the attorney state college prepared with all of the items necessary and the agenda topics. And working with our other officials throughout the region and area. So thank you for our staff who do themselves. And I was honored to give the county report on all of our successes moving forward. I want to handle that. You two also discussed the issues that we spoke about on that. On the fifth of January, I had to head to Lana to go do some business with local partners. We had a chairman who's out of town and they needed some senior tours. So I applied and in the meantime, I went to or something county roads out there, which will be addressed here pretty soon. And they're actually in really good shape. So I'm very proud of our staff out in the far eastern region of Los Angeles County, the area of Delhi and all the way through Valley of Ten as it connects to Orford County. So I was able to spend a few hours out there. I was able to do that. On the twelfth of last Thursday night, we had a rule board meeting.
Recording in progress.
We're moving forward. We have an attorney for the rule and we are looking forward to starting discussions with the Board of County Commissioners. If possible, after today's executive session, which we decide to do regarding Cooper Canyon. That comment was, that topic was raised at the roundtable with Mayor Rico. And since it has been brought up to the table again, I think it's time that we discuss how we got before the rule. It is also one of the table as well. And not just for the bad doing. We have the opera house that is lighted and we have some issues there with the owners that we could get either working stabilization of these buildings or someone's going to get hurt. And I don't want that to fall into the shortening, especially of the rule. We have the authority to, for condemnation and for removal of the light from the cap and the city. I'm sure that our TIF money is way down and they're going to be down this year. And then actually even worse due to legislation and also due to some of the properties being covenanted with the city. So it was sort of governmental agency there along on the property tax laws, which hurts their little TIF, taxidermy funding. So our budget went from forty thousand for revenue to one twenty, two thousand, three thousand for twenty twenty-three and same change for sure. So we look forward to entertaining different options of raising funds through lighting homes and possibly the board is looking at one home right now in particular, renovating, possibly, and say, oh, the procedure will move forward. It's going to be a lengthy procedure, but move forward, possibly have some renovations done. But that's the overall long term dream of this. And then sadly, that property has to start raising some more much greater urban rule board through those types of things. It's gonna, that was gonna be kind of tough when they get done, but it can be done. We just have to follow the procedures. And then yesterday, we had the local partner incorporated, first meeting of the year. I, we had some technical difficulties getting connected, finally there to get the meeting that been going. I've been selected as a treasurer for about the seventh year. And that means I gotta keep present and I gotta sign more checks. So congratulations. We have a loan for what was approved by the finance committee that was for fifteen thousand line of credit, if you all remember. Well, in recent contracts that that individual contractor received a huge contract in Lana for renovations of, I believe, the home is a feat facility. However, his terms on that, on his contract, we needed more revenue. So that dropped before the board and the board extended a fifty thousand dollar line of credit. And based on the contract, which is going to be about fifty thousand dollars in contract work for this individual. And mainly because the pay schedule is a sixty day pay schedule to recoup money from the general contractor. So it takes sixty days. So they did the except nine of credit, fifty thousand, fifteen thousand, but they shortened the terms. So they basically doesn't actually. But so there's still a lot of money out there for those folks that are interested in small business loans in our community, even for equipment or wages or just perhaps a cushion. Local partners is a great organization. If you have any questions out there online or maybe in the room, please call me and I'll give you the contact information for us. We're determined to solve that.
Thank you. One of the questions, if you may put it out there, I see the phone call. What is the interest rate that the, our interest rate that?
Two percent above prime.
The rate?
So when it was really low, down to two and three percent, we were giving loans of five percent, four percent, five percent. So we primarily go two percent over prime. And that interest that is made stays in the result fund balance, which will be lent out as a different mechanism. It doesn't have the same requirements as the CDT grants, the SBD CDT grants. They have a requirement of reporting for job protection and employment issues and so documentation. So it doesn't have that around or all involved.
Thank you. Commissioner Tony Haas?
On the fourth of January, CCI had a legislative update on some of the bills. The CCI is following and has followed the governor deciding two bills. House Bill twenty-two ten ninety-seven, dissolution of special district municipalities and regular service authorities may file an application to dissolve special district. And now this bill allows county governments to do the same. Another bill, Senate Bill twenty-two one fourteen, earlier assignments are in critical fire suppression funds. This bill will allow counties to apply for designation and preservation of fire suppression funds. One of the bills that we're following pretty closely right now is an assault weapon ban. You were talking about earlier, Commissioner Lopez, and it's being proposed on assault weapons being very hard, thirties and fifteens. And reducing the number of rails per clip. And if you are going to be buying in this bill, if you are going to buy two twenty threes or two forty threes, which are your assault weapon type animal, you'll have to register to buy that so they can track them also. There's been more, I'm sure, Commissioner Felix Lopez, or some of those others. On the fifth of January, CCI hosted another meeting with the Behavioral Health Administration. Doctor Medlock from BH, Behavioral Health Administration was there along with four or five others from that, from the Behavioral Health Administration. One of the requests that they were making from the budget committee was that they get enough money to fund additional three, four employees. The key components of the Behavioral Health Administration service organizations is to help individuals and families initiate behavioral health care and ensure timely access to service. Consolidate MSOs and ASOs and services offered by other health clinics. Provide a continuum of behavioral health and safety net services and care coordination and interface aligned with regions and capital entities that manage services and provide care coordination for medical members. House Bill twelve seven eighty takes effect in July of two thousand and twenty-four. And this one, I'll let you talk about that. On the eleventh of January, for cars and PCMS, Piddy Canyon, new site, had a consultation meeting. And Angie Bellows, the new director of general for police's position. The purpose of the meeting was to convene, well, basically meet her and to convene consulting parties and tribal authorities, get an annual report of management practices for DCMS ranches. Maneuver damages and report on those damages and how they were mitigating them and basic operating procedures. They were also tasked with developing a way to preserve and protect historical ranches. That was a huge conversation and the historical, what's?
Preservation?
Preservation was there with, Rebecca, the good one is the, is that Sam? And she's concerned that their preservation tactics are demolition by default. Because there, some of those branches haven't been worked on in many years and they're falling apart. So hopefully they'll address that soon. On the twelfth of January, CCI had a meeting over the collective bargaining. The purpose of the call of the Comorbid Division of Labor and Employment, Scott Moss, the new director, was a kind of relaxation to, for our informal pre-rulemaking stakeholder meeting. Before drafting any proposed rules, the division typically invites a broad group of stakeholders to a pre-rulemaking conversation for guidance. Also on the twelfth, I met with Kate Greenberg, my last meeting with her as chair of the Iowa Law and Urban Affairs Committee. And she informed us that she had a meeting with the Mexican government at the National West Side Stock Show. And one of the, one of the topics that was brought up is President Biden was there and they were talking about water and water being a huge issue with focus coming out of the waters in the U.S. And the Mexican president was concerned that, that they wanted their application of the water from Colorado River. And the president said, don't worry about it, have it back. And that was confusing to me because how can you control another nature? But anyway, that was one of the topics that was brought up on the conversation. Let's see. On the, another topic of the words conversation is it asked me to push harder for an extension and to be flexible when it comes to ag water after all of you produce Americans food. On the thirteenth of January, I had a meeting with Colorado Water Congress, a conversation on the, you know, the laptop, on the set on a panel. On the twenty-sixth of January, with Donald Mann, several other individuals, what would be talking about the challenges with agriculture and what we can do to mitigate that situation and probably and possibly get all of the ag organizations to maybe start talking with more unified message so that when we vote in the legislature, we can have the same message that will resonate with those legislators. Also on the thirteenth of January, CCI hosted a wildland urban interface conversation with Senator Cutter. She wants the, a twenty-one member Wui Co. Board to impose rules and regs, not a reelected board, to an appointed board. That could be telling us how to hard surface our homes. You have to put metal roofs on, another fundamental mandate. There's still no definition defining Wui and it's difficult to put this with Nova. Difficult to define which area of the state is at high risk due to nature. And one side doesn't fill, what happens in Boulder doesn't happen in Capital, Colorado. There's a, if you do a substantial remodel, up to fifty percent of your home would be required to hard surface your home. If, if it won't affect land use code, they said it, we'll see. How is it a constituent, was paid for the thirty thousand dollar extra? That was one of my questions to, pardon me, that's concrete side of the metal roof. Senator, how are we going to afford that when our median household income is twenty eight thousand? And if in a high risk designation, will insurance rates jump? That's another good question that they haven't answered. And with all of these additional costs, I will just fit into the housing affordability, push that we're experiencing right now. Also on the thirteenth of January, CCI had land use working group, accessory dwelling units. What they would like to do is make it, Mr. Jody was in here to, here to this, what they would like to do is, is you can do a renovation after you do the Wui Co. You can do a renovation to your garage and put your mother in love in the garage and it will be a new zoning charge. Yeah. But the governor has met with some pushback. He met with enough people that his staff has come to the realization that they're not sure how they're going to deal with the issue and how to deal with the growth and affordable housing at the same time. One of my questions to them was, if in your area that you want to do these, like you maybe develop your attic or develop your garage, most of these zone units are, are, are being zoned to have so many people in it, right? So your server, water infrastructure, everything else is, is developed around that, that possible number. Then you start adding more people to that, how is that going to work? And water infrastructure, server, water, electric and so on. And that's my report, sir.
We should have a question, let me tell you.
Yes, please. On the Piddy Canyon conservation efforts, we had been meeting before. I brought it multiple times. If we're going to conserve and spend taxpayer dollars to preserve these, these structures and stuff, are they going to allow people to visit it? Is that still yet to be determined? Was that either brought up?
Yeah, they did say it pretty well. Yes, it's, it's real fast to make a report.
And it is the best that's spent money, the older the city.
Yeah. The part of the conversation when we had with the Army, it was more of the, there was a representative from out of the tribes and the processing, he feels right now, the Army has to do is rebuild the trust that they never gained from the Native American community. So one thing that he was very, that there was a representative from the, the Native community was very impressed with the fact that they invited, pretty much the question, the conversation began, what can we do to work together? And in the history, according to him, that conversations had been going on, he had never heard of. So that was a really masculine perspective, but yes, indeed, the opening of these places was beyond us to key, A, the accountability and transparency at the table. So thank you so much. I want to repeat, it's pretty much the same meetings that we attended, but I want to say also from the legislative wrong people, Los Angeles County had led the conversation in format. Thank you all once again. As Commissioner Reese Sossis, I would like to reiterate the fact that it was a great meeting. It was a really good conversation. But one of the things that, one of the meetings on this wildlife, wildlife urban interface, I, we had a discussion and basically I challenged our group of county commissioners at the statewide level. As Commissioner Tony Haas, this will not be intersecting with land use. So I asked him to explain to us, how is that not going to be interfering with land use? And indeed, my perception is that it will, simply because if you are going to be renovating your house, fifty one percent, now you have to go get a permit. So there is your land use. So the two are going to be working in tandem. What I, my perception, my own opinion is basically to do the renovation accordingly, which is what the state of Colorado feels every Colorado has to have. As Tony is talking about, Commissioner Tony Haas, is the, the hard surface coating, i.e. whatever metal roofing we're going to be putting on there. Those parts are going to be passed on to the consumers. So I really believe willing to keep that because the land use and the wildlife urban interface will intersect at a point in time, one can afford the man, they will deny the other. And that's, that's kind of extreme. Going back to when we met with the Doc Medlock, I asked him, which really the question is, these thirty-four additional FTEs that you are procuring, are they going to be located throughout Southern Colorado, throughout? And I describe, Southern Colorado has been, been not only rural, but in some instances, we are still frontier in most of the outside areas of the counties as well. We are hoping to house in Denver to provide services, talent, communications, health, medicine, talent, whatever that is, behavioral health. So it's going to be another concentration on FTE in Denver. And I hope the benefit comes to Los Angeles County. We've been invited, Doc, to visit us here in Los Angeles County. We'll continue the conversation. They're going to be putting their task force, of which I hope to be proud of, at the statewide level for behavioral health. We'll see how the conversation is going, but that's one of the things that we need to keep them accountable on because, as Commissioner Tony Haas, what's good for Boulder may not be good for our county, here in San Antonio, here in rural Colorado. Briefly, the, on the land use regulations that we spoke about as well, one of the concerns that we have is when we met with the governor at the CCI conference, he very clearly said, and I quote, if there is a problem with land use regulations, we will correct it. Meaning probably the state will be correcting that, passing it on to counties. So they're basically going to tell us, this is what you need to follow. You can go higher, but not less than. So yet to be determined, a lot of information and dialogue that is going on. The one, one, Water Congress, I had a conversation as well, as Commissioner Tony Haas mentioned, with the president of Water Congress last weekend. One thing that my concern, as I heard a comment, that our United States key representative made a promise to the Mexican government, a key representative on that side, that we will comply with the water. So I reminded President of Water Congress, Mr. Travis Smith, to please put that out there and let the, let the federal government know that we have states, forty million people depend on the water from Colorado. As one of the head water producers of the United States, that the United States compact has to be maintained to provide for add. And the complaint right now is that agriculture is consuming seventy percent of the water as it should it should be. So a lot of information and one thing that we do have online is a key, a link to the CCI legislative priorities and to the CCI legislation that is going to be coming upon counties. We're going to be heavily involved and for purposes of being at the table, we're going to be there at every one of those roundtables and certainly we'll keep you updated on that. And that will be the reports from the county commissioners. Thank you so much, commissioners. Let me now, with the elected officials update, and since we have our clerk and reporter and the deputy clerk, we'd like to welcome you, Mrs. Gary Apple and Mr. Volzner. Welcome. Do you guys have any attend? Please, if you do, please join us. And you got up to forty-five minutes.
Oh, great. We don't really have a whole lot other than, we've had some setbacks, but we're moving forward. We do have a training that's coming up that we will be attending next week. And we have a couple other trainings that we've put in place so we can start working the system and getting the attorney reporter's office wrong for twenty twenty-three. Other than that, there's not a lot.
Well, thank you. Congratulations a lot, Chairman.
I mean, I heard some positive comments from constituents coming up your office in the past week. And so thank you for the changes in the phone systems, especially, I think we've got some comments on that. So we're already hearing some positive, and I'm sure we're negative too. But keep, keep on the good movement forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else we have? Let me call on Los Angeles County Assistant, Mrs. Jody Amaro. Los Angeles County Treasurer, Miss Donna Leonetti. Los Angeles County Sheriff, Mr. Derek Navarro. Los Angeles County District Attorney, Mr. Kerry Solano. Los Angeles County Corporation, Mr. June Berger. Thank you all. We're going to move to section five of the comment. Anyone online that wishes to address the Board of County Commissioners, please raise your hand or since you're on mute, you have three minutes to address the Board of County Commissioners. And this is going to be the opportunity. So if anyone wishes to do so, this would be the perfect time. And or anyone here in the chambers, who have any ones that?
No, it's not a question.
Thank you. Here in nine, I'm going to go to section six and finish business. We do not have any. That leads us to section seven. Seven B, consideration of IAP number twenty-two dash C zero zero five, change order number four, courthouse, regaining more time extension, Mr. Earl Camp.
Commissioner, before you for your considerations, I have the twenty-two C zero zero five, zero zero five, change order number four. The contractor performing that work was asked for one extension due to weather and sickness within the contractor's crews. He had issues with supplies, continuing more issues with supplies, proper trucks, etc. So he's asked for one. So he's asked for an extension. He said it would change the date, which was December 31st, 2022, extending it to 3:30 PM, May 31st, 2023, and as were not to impose a penalty for item 3.4 or bid documents because the contractor did request this extension prior to the extension.
The expiration of the asset deadline. Commissioners, any discussion on that?
Chairman, if I may, just to alert the community and the public, this wall has, of course, anything that is old, this building seems ugly, situations raises head, and now our building is part of that. So I have no qualms about doing this extension. I think Mr. East and his group have done a great job in keeping us alert and on keeping us in the loop on everything, the projects that's gone and entail on a timely manner. And I think with the board, any indication of what the, just, I'm sorry, the justice suite, it's indicated that we're really good, done a job as this committee. So I have no qualms. So with that said, I take the motion to approve change order IFP number 22 dash C 005, change order number.
Second motion.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Luiz Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pique?
Yes.
And thank you for voting up, and just to do noting that communication with the contractor is on hold and should it be anywhere weather related, please give us a press contact because March 31st is right around the corner, and that's a huge project.
I think, I think this request was made.
On May 31st?
Regardless of the disclosure results, there's due to know, expensive tasks, everybody can see we're on May 1st. This is supposed to be a wall project, not a sewer and storm drain and everything else the contractor bring into the, thank goodness he is willing to do that work, because otherwise we're going to end up with saturated sewers like we have now and potential for walls and steps and things, where else to start seeking?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Section C, discussion and consideration of chair of the board of county commissioners, and I think that for, we would, would this for academic year, for county in the year 2023?
That's correct.
Correct. Commissioners, if I may, chairman, please.
I've had the pleasure of sitting in that chair and in the role that I've been on as vice chair as well, and I just wanted to ask if Commissioner Haskins would be interested in that, and shaking his head no. But, but it is, it is a lot more headache, but it is an honor to be able to make sure that Commissioner Haskins is not interested in the chair and hearing the headcount and the.
I'm not second that nomination.
I will make the nomination to keep Chairman Felix Lopez as the chairman of the board of commissioners.
I would second that motion.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Luiz Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pique?
I accept that it is humbling. I tell you one thing, we got, I really appreciate your trust and I appreciate your support. And I can tell you one thing, we continue to do the best that we know how to represent the San Luis County, so I accept that. Thank you so much. We also have to go over, it's coming up right here, section B, discussion and consideration of vice chair of the board of county commissioners.
Well, you two have done a magnificent job in the two positions that you're running, and I would just like to, I'll make Luiz Lopez the vice chair position. And on that capacity, you guys, chair, I'm going to step down from my chair role to second that motion.
Commissioner Pique?
Yes.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Luiz Lopez?
Very humbly, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Luiz Lopez.
I would like to, Chris, to call you.
All is changing. Okay.
She was just starting to know.
Sorry, she didn't have a junior. Okay, thank you so much. The, and one thing that for the community, these, these positions, beyond the honor, it's a lot of work and there's a lot of responsibility, but we think it is serious because when we took that off, it is, it is ever here that we're here because of all the constituents' trust, put the trust in that so. Commissioner, commissioners looking forward to another exciting 2023. Section B, consideration of IFP 23 C 002 extension office van, Dr. Dogan.
Commissioner, before you is, for your consideration is IFP 23 dash C 002, the extension office van. We solicited bids for 12-passenger van to be used by the extension office. Our individual who sends those bids out to various companies, organizations send out 13 of those bid documents to various automotive agencies, as it's called, with no reply. We had absolutely zero bids for this van. I don't know, I don't speak any why. State bid on this, awarded, I've written to state contact to ask for an explanation as to why their current bid, which extends to their current bid, meaning the state's award for 12-passenger van extends to bid in 2023, when, what I assume was a price that the vendor that was awarded that, that 12-passenger van award doesn't have to hold to that price for 2023 model. I went for a response. The vendor themselves that was awarded that award said that they are waiting for prices of the 2024 vehicles. So I guess I was asked as well to, since nobody bid on it, to reject the bid or whether proper technology, just rely on our council to do that and when, if we can purchase a 2023 van, give me the authority to do it and purchase that. And if not, then wait for the prices of 2024, which they thought would be this spring, maybe in the, the company that was awarded the bid, thought would be coming out this, this spring 2024. So at that time, I'm going to wait and, but our procurement policy is also, without even going to, to go in purchase of state bid, but we thought we would be a very vendor in our community, the opportunity to bid on it, and none of them did.
And I think, Mr. Dogan, at this state procurement, our county procurement regulations are a lot for that. And I actually went online and I looked at the, the state, state of Colorado vehicle listing that they have in there, and I didn't get a deep look on research, as you are mentioning, but they were some of the lists on the statewide list. And I know because we have, you have county commissioners, you have all kinds of state agencies going on from that, but maybe if you reject the bid, we'll do some information and response here. If the county wanted to go back to the bid, you would have to begin the process all over again.
That's correct.
Yes. Now, I think the vehicle that is now being used is competent or safe for the extension office, correct? We have some vehicle issues with it?
There's some issues with the current vendor, there is, that's correct.
So having said that, I think we've done our diligence and followed a bit of procurement process to allow all vendors and state vendors to, to move forward with this. And so since there is nothing coming in, I would make the motion to refuse the IFP 23 C 002 extension van.
Second motion.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Luiz Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pique?
Yes.
And I will take a look at the state bid, and if need be, there is a state procurement office, they have a representative that you can speak to directly and they can run through the process. Whether it is permissible or mandatory, those vendors need to be both.
Just as a side note, that's what we bought last year's utility issues we from, it's all state officials.
Okay.
We have 34,000 budget for that purchase.
Thank you. Just as a side note. Item seven, consideration of IFP 23 C 003, new four-by-four medium utility passenger vehicle, Mr. Dogan.
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration, IFP 23 C 003, utility passenger vehicle, we have 35,000 budget for this purchase and again, made submitted request to various vendors, all local, probably Denver area, receives one bid, $43,100, fill along Toyota. As I mentioned, our budget for this was 35,000, based upon state bid price of 31,639 for a blazer that does adhere to all the qualifications or all the specifications that we listed. Repeating myself in the past, I would say, so following here is state, the company that was awarded the state bid for utility vehicles, it's something the same thing. 2023 is available, we have to wait for 2024, they don't know what their prices is. Again, I've contacted the state, emailed the state, and I'm waiting for a response from them to see whether or not we can push to get a 2023 or if we do indeed have to wait for 2024. One of the more decisions we have to make is bid to fill along Toyota for a forerunner for $43,100, we're going to repeat that the budget for this is 35,000, based upon a 31,369 state bid price.
And Mr. Dogan, we can't presume that 35,000 dollar price with the safe hit, there is vehicle available?
If there, if there's a 2023 available, the list price right now is 31,000. 31,639 dollars, basis price. But again, it isn't available according to the vendor.
So two things, we budgeted 35,000, correct? So we would have to go back to the rebudgeting more official funds and then possibly put out another bid document in that.
We can do that, Commissioner. If the board decides to add to our budget number in order to pay for the forerunner, then no, we don't have to rebid it, but then just a little bit, if we're going to look at buying off the state bid, the board can just give it that direction, that's what it can be possible.
Yeah, so for sake of other car dealerships that saw the budget, I'm sure the budget was included in their.
It did not.
Oh, yeah, okay, so I just want to make sure it was fair for other companies to build bid.
But if the board, if the board does decide to rebid this, to try to get further bids, caution that now the competitions who are filling on Toyota would know what their, what their bid is, and I'm not sure if that would be fair.
Probably won't be. So probably moving in earlier, the next best thing to do is to reject the bid and also go with the state procurement, the state bid pricing, the safe ones available. That's kind of more of the, you're building it, Commissioner Dogan?
That would be my recommendation, because I should, it's way over.
That does a lot of money, and again, we are representatives of the taxpayers here. We have a few short responsibilities, so with that said, I will make the motion to reject IFP 23 C 003, new four-by-four medium utility passenger vehicle.
Second motion.
Commissioner Haskins?
Yes.
Commissioner Luiz Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pique?
Yes.
Section B, consideration of IFP 23 R 001 gravel purchase, Mr. Dogan.
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration is IFP 23 R 001 gravel purchase for a removal requirement, the whole results. And I'm going to skip to, when I bid the, when I send these bid documents, I said enough such that we consider awarding this, our haulage costs, capital ratio, haulage cost, and also placement cost, would be part of that consideration because we're going to mow our trunks at a private pit and haul that material to different locations, that's another part of the county in this case. So in my thinking, the costs of not only haulage, but also, need to be considered when we, when the board awards this contract. So that being said, I'll read the material costs themselves first, and then I'll go to my calculated material haulage, can't placement costs. So the material costs themselves are raw products, $5, 36 cents a ton. The only sand gravel, $7 a ton. All right, paving, $9 a ton. And if I use or add to those, the haul and the placement costs, I come up with the, the only cost of $15.10 a ton. All right, $25.20 a ton, and raw products, $9.41 a ton. If I had preference points for our local contractor, the only sand gravel, that would reduce their 15.10 to 43.4 for price per person, which is still way above raw products bid of a total cost of 9.41 a ton.
So Mr. Dogan, on the five percentage preference points, are those on the table that the county has?
Do we think we do a policy measure where it is?
And you take in the consideration of mileage from the bid to stack there?
Yes, sir, that's part of that haulage consideration. The only bid number two, which is very northern of the county, we're having to cross, almost across the metro county line, it's 20 miles to the average location of where we're putting this material. Raw products, sand miles and all rights is a little more miles away. So that's what's going to, the haulage cost, Mr. Dogan.
Chairman, if I may, for disclosure purposes, I was contacted by Mr. Deoni, and he was giving his concerns regarding the difference in price. So I also reached out to Mr. Dogan, and further more, this breakdown was presented to us today, how that's going to be forward. And I also reached out to Commissioner John Delucia of North Carolina County regarding the Williams pit, and a little bit of background on that pit is a stockpile of gravel that has been left there for future sales. So there's not a lot of expenses for that organization, that company out there to crush that's already existing, and that could be why the reason it's less expensive. The pit was originally built for the windmill tower, the concrete, for a, out there on the, we ten area, and that has been, that pit hasn't been utilized in years, but they give us a stockpile. So I think we've done our due diligence on determining the price, the game, like I mentioned in our last agenda item, we have a judicial responsibility, we're forward here. And at this time, I would, there's no other conversations or any comments, I will make the motion to approve IFP 23 R 001 gravel purchase to raw products, purely by all of the success.
Thank you, Commissioner Luiz. Before we go with the second, Mr. Dogan, just once again, FYI, the project location proximity is closer to the pit, and that's what makes, in a sense, the price differential from our, from your perspective.
That's correct. Commissioner, kind of pick the spot, like the city. That's correct. Commissioner, I kind of picked the spot right in the city where we're putting this material. And from, as I mentioned, the raw products bit, it's about a two mile runway haulage. And from Yoni number two, it's about a twenty. And from haul rights, it's about a forty-one. So we double that. That's what our round trip might enjoy being just as much as half the distance. And everyone can get double the production as far as haulage and also our placement costs. And that's just about half if we're hauling from a closer pit. Because we're getting more material. But in, in our research, you talked about the twenty-five tons per, for bottom level trailer. That's why we've done these types of arrangements in the past. And also, as mentioned to the board, we thought about it in the weekend. It says we also, on the lower level, we have a truck. We have a scale so we can also scale, bucket scale is what it's called. And also make sure that we are giving twenty-five tons.
I, I think for purposes of accountability and transparency to our taxpayers, it would be my recommendation. I think we can agree that that will be a great step to take.
And then we'll add to that, we'll have one of the trucks after it's supposed to go in and get a, a net tonnage of the haulage. Make sure that our scales are, our coffee back and we are bucket. And then we are indeed getting the twenty-five tons for a long term. So we'll do a double check.
Thank you. Uh, so we have a motion. I need a second. And, uh, for Chairman, for full disclosure, it is a transparency. I was contacted by Mr. Yoni too with his concern. And, uh, having said that, I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes. Seven H, consideration of Jolly Pick Contract, Mr. Dora Cap.
Commissioner Floyd, for your consideration is the Jolly Pick Contract. We have a gravel operation along part of the Jolly Properties. And the exploration was the end of twenty twenty-two involving getting everybody's sewage on this. Thanks Attorney Nelson for helping me with this. And that's what's been through for your consideration.
Commissioner, any discussion?
Move to approve the Jolly Pick Contract.
Second motion.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes. Uh, seven I, consideration of Public Press Chief Fourth Report from two thousand twenty-two. County pressure down on the land, it says this regular, uh, do we have any discussion, any comments, Commissioners? And let's, Mr. Dora Cap, provide us a record, uh, any information?
No, sir.
If no discussion, I will enter the motion.
Motion to accept the Public Press Chief Fourth Report from two thousand twenty-two.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes. Seven J, consideration of Mary Stokes Airport, parentheses, E A D, parentheses, FAA grant application for taxiway and airport improvements, Mr. Dora Cap.
Commissioner Floyd, for considerations of Mary Stokes Airport, FAA grant applications for taxiway airport improvements. There'll be one change to this and wait on the consultants. This is one of the docket signs. So I can't go in and change the docket itself and make those corrections. They have to change it. They have to consult. They have to change their own area. But that will be, uh, our D B E O, that will all be persons assistance that will be made in this interim.
Thank you for catching that, uh, prediction. Any discussion, Commissioners? Otherwise, I'll enter the motion.
Vote for approval of Mary Stokes Airport, parentheses, T A D, parentheses, FAA grant application for taxiway and airport improvements.
Second motion.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes. Uh, seven A, consideration of Trinidad State College, Colorado Community Scholarship Initiative, matching student scholarship, Mr. Dora Cap.
Commissioner Floyd, for considerations is, there is support for Trinidad State's Colorado Community Scholarship Initiative, matching student scholarship. And thank you Attorney Nelson for appointing that title. That would be in the second paragraph. Percent, no more than two hundred fifteen percent. And that should be that.
Nope. Wow.
Great idea. Yes, this is a nice season.
From an N to a T, it makes a big difference. So question of the chairman, yes, finance director. Um, in the past, we matched these by using, I think, up to five thousand dollars. Before we had the, um, nonprofit funds available. So last year, I think we awarded them nonprofit funds.
We did.
So where is this budget from for this if we?
This, this will help not, she's filling out the application because I saw it and told me. And this letter actually, it doesn't matter if we award them eight thousand, they still need this letter from the state portion of the grant.
This is one of, the one, the reality is we'll still be using the nonprofit, I'm trying to go.
She must apply, it will still go through the committee. But this letter here, I think, is, um, is needed by February first for them to actually, I think, the state to.
Thank you for that verification. So, so, anyone discussion? Otherwise, I'll enter the motion.
Motion to approve Trinidad State College, Colorado Community Scholarship.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes. Uh, section eight, financial matters, consideration of bills and table for the first half of January two thousand twenty-three. That director, permission.
Well, let's see. P L S of January fifteen, twenty twenty-three is one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine ninety-two cents. Do you have any questions on you?
We will not.
So, um, we have one packet and it's very large. On January thirteen for one million eighty-nine thousand forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. So within this packet is we paid our first, um, annual dues for CAP, that's our property insurance, for five hundred sixty-two thousand. Our workman's comp for our first annual dues, that was a hundred eighty thousand. Um, the corners dues were due as well for one thousand two eighty-seven. Uh, Fisher's Peak, uh, grant study, eighteen thousand three hundred to THK Association. Um, we have to get additional insurance at our airport for hangers. It's not part of CTSI that we actually go through Trinidad Insurance Center for seven thousand four seventy. That's for the hangers. And then, um, the taxless advertisement for our treasure was seven thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Those are just a few highlights of what the large amounts were, why it came to one million dollars.
Plus on top of that, we're doing it twice.
We're doing it twice and we're trying to squeeze everything in this one.
So it seems to work.
Yes, and actually we have the twenty-fifth.
One question I have for you, since the, um, I don't know if the city has implemented their utility rate increases of yet. If they have, do you notice an increase in utilities or?
I need to look at that. I'm not all, all of the, you know.
I think it took effect January first. I can't remember when the ordinance took effect, but it might be a thirty day cycle. Probably they bill this one. I want to keep an eye on that.
I haven't noticed that at my house, just to tell you, but I'm looking at the bills and comparing to last year and I'll, I'll send you a manual.
So, Miss Cover, one person I had and I saw this, I was going over the report, the Trinidad Insurance Center for the, uh, airport. I know CTSI and the FAA have certain rules and regulations. I would imagine that they one hundred percent comply with the regulations to ensure that portion of the airport.
Correct, correct. I think the, the previous person that's in charge of the insurance actually went through Trinidad Insurance. But I can actually pull up the insurance policy and make sure we think it's.
Since CTSI.
The requirements for CTSI, this is.
Right. I, I just want to make sure that those requirements align one with the other because simply that's a whole different insurance than, than what I would procure for a residential and or a commercial duties. Just kind of.
And since it exceeded the six thousand dollar bid procurement price, do we need to go out to bid for that, Commissioner? Future.
This is different place because I think the way, I think it's come to board. It came to board last year because when you do this, when they do it, it's a three-year installment. So when we actually give the insurance policy, it's a three-year installment. I think it came to you last year. So this is probably the second installment. And then there's one more year that we'll have to go over one more time. Because I, I'm pretty sure that's how it's built. It says three installments.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you for the verification. Any other discussion, Commissioner? And I agree on that.
Move for approval of bills and table for the first half of January two thousand twenty-three.
Second motion.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes. At this point, uh, we're going to have a meeting with the CHS, I would imagine. So I made a motion to suspend the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting with a temporary recess. And so we can, uh, open up the meeting with the Board of County Commissioners acting on capacity and avoiding interference.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique Solzner.
Yes, temporary recess.